They participate in that metro fire permit process, which means they recognize if another jurisdiction within the Kansas side of the metro area has inspected the unit to make sure it's in compliance with fire codes, they receive a sticker and an inspection approval. And then we recognize that under the Johnson County Fire District. Previously, there was no review being done with the fire district here because we didn't even know that process wasn't existent. So there's some reference to obtaining other permits and other elements that are important here. So obviously, the health aspect of food trucks, there is a permit process there that's handled either through the county or through the state. Here, we also have the addition of the fire permit, so I wanted to make sure of that. So it wasn't just that staff sat there and conjured up these things. We did have some elements where we were getting inquiries and situations that were occurring in the community, and we just basically have found that the ordinance, the way it was written, was inadequate for what's been going on. A draft of amendments were provided to the planning commission back in August. You know, recall, that was not really part of the meeting discussion. We just simply presented those to you so you could start familiarizing yourselves with that. And then also in September, where we had a more formal presentation and discussion of those items. The city attorney has conducted a review of the proposed changes and amendments to the LDC, and the chapters that are impacted is primarily seventeen point oh five, which is the zoning districts and use standards. As I mentioned before, when we're looking at this section of the LDC, we really only had a few goals in mind. One, clarifying food and beverage mobile definition. So our definitions really didn't help us in understanding what is it that we were trying to accomplish through the temporary use permit process? Nobody is saying that we should not have food trucks, but we want to make sure that we're permitting the right things under the right definitions through the right processes. And previous to the amendments, we only had basically the temporary use of property, that temporary use permit process. And it was truly intended to be for mobile users. So what we started seeing was how do we differentiate between a mobile use, the typical food truck or typical mobile vendor, versus something that becomes more permanent or semi-permanent in the use of the property? So one of those definitions really has to do, or changes in that definition has to do with when you're attached to the ground or you're attached to a public or private utility, you're no longer mobile, you're now becoming semi-permanent or permanent. And so that's where we started drawing the line in how we look at what process do some of these things go through to be permitted in the future? If we determine that a mobile food and beverage use is a permanent or a semi-permanent use of property, then we would look at it as equivalent to the typical food and beverage use in general. And when I'm talking about that, that would be the permanent structure. So if you think about a restaurant, for instance, like Panda Express that you proved or things like that, those are considered food and beverage general or heavy uses. So when something becomes permanent in nature, we want to hold it to the same standards or very equivalent standards that we would do under a restaurant that is built bricks and mortar on a site. In regard to the mobile food grouping, then, it's not a clarification, it's really we're providing a definition finally of what that is. We really did not have a definition of what a mobile food and beverage court was, okay? So we were relying on a small portion of code that had a couple standards embedded into it that it was okay to group these things under certain conditions, but we really didn't have a definition of what that grouping was. So we provided that definition again, which may occur, and here's a differentiation that we see here, may occur as a special activity or event. So it might be associated with a community event. For instance, you might have a food truck rally that's associated with a chamber of commerce event, or a high school tournament that's going on, and they decide to bring in food trucks and group them together to serve food during that period of time. So we look at those as a limited period of time with an approved special event or community activity. Those are not permanent, those are semi-permanent, they're not even semi-permanent, they're more mobile. They come in for the event, they serve the event, and then they leave the community as a group. The other part of this, when we're really talking about food court idea, or the court where groups of trucks come together, groups of vendors come together, is more of a permanent use of property, the allowance of those. We've witnessed those in other communities, we've attended them, hopefully you have too. They're very successful, they're very attractive to people, they like going to those things. So we wanted to define that permanent use of property and allow for those food trucks to occur, or food truck courts to occur. But again, we have to look at it as equivalent to a food and beverage general use of that So as we started looking at that, then, we clarified the standards for all the food and beverage mobile use category there. We determined which zoning districts, which really wasn't provided in guidance that we should allow for food and beverage mobile uses. We've defined that there should be a site plan, so we understand how the use is being placed on the property and how to anticipate circulation occurring on the property as people come to visit it. We've defined it as an intermittent use of the property, which means the property or the vendor, if you will, should not be placed there twenty-four seven and just allow its unit to sit there closed and open on the site. That's for the temporary use permit process, okay? So it's really important to clarify here. We're not saying that we won't have situations where a person or a vendor does want to place their stuff there twenty-four seven and store it when it's not in operation. But before, we really didn't define the difference. And what we're defining as the difference is, if you're truly a mobile use, you come in under the temporary use permit process, okay? So if you're an intermittent use of the property, you're accessory to a permanent use that's already there, those would go and be reviewed under the temporary use permit process. If you're determined to be more permanent, you want to store that unit onsite in off-hours, when you're not using it or it's not in operation, then you would go through the conditional use permit process, which would trigger a public hearing so that people, the surrounding property owners get notified and have an understanding of what's going on there. And then the planning commission, city council have a say as to whether that's allowable or not allowable under certain conditions. So we're not preventing them from having units there twenty-four seven and having them closed, but you would not use the temporary use permit process, you would go through the conditional use permit process instead. On the mobile grouping and uses, again, we have the same kind of situation of the temporary use permit versus the conditional use permit. For a special activity or event, we would look at this as a temporary use permit. They're in for a couple days, it's defined with an activity and they're out. So now the temporary use permit process is what we use. But if it's going to be a food court or defined as that food court where you have multiple vendors on the same site, they would have to go through the conditional use permit process to get approval to use the property that way. Then each vendor would still need its temporary use permit because they have to get through that inspection process. We have to know that they're meeting the health standards and the fire standards and everything else. So the property owner is the responsible party for the conditional use permit process, then the individual vendors are, have to go through their temporary use permit process, okay? Those vendors that are going to be on that site, okay? We did put in reference to other applicable licenses and certifications and permits and registrations because we want to make sure those are part of the process. We need to see that all of those standards are being met. The current code does reflect the same thing. The reason I've highlighted it is because of what we found with the fire inspections. If we weren't aware of that and it wasn't getting included in our process, that'll now get integrated into our application forms for the various permits. So that way, we're seeing that documentation upfront. And then the other thing we wanted to do was just coordinate this activity between subsections Y and P. And if you remember, subsection Y is the temporary use area. So we're just making sure that we've cleaned up some things in that sense. Since you last saw this, we've made a couple changes, and I'm going to point to something that was at your desk here this evening. I'll read it into the record at the start of the public hearing so that everybody sees it. But I did receive a letter from the Chamber of Commerce regarding some concerns on the electrical side of things. So one of the things that we have in the current draft was if you tied to any public utility or private utility, you were going to get defined as a permanent or semi-permanent use of the property. The representative from the chamber pointed out some factors involving the electrical side of this, and I think we've been able to come up with some language that works because before what we did allow is we would allow people to tie into electrical, okay, as part of the process. What we're trying to do here, though, is the intent of that was if you had an active use on that site, you could run the appropriate cords into an outlet at one of those buildings that was there and operate off of that versus a generator. So you didn't necessarily have to run the generator full-time while you were there. That has been, I'm going to say, has been lax, has been restricted in a lax way. Utilities has allowed for some meters to be placed on pedestals on some of these properties with direct tie-ins to some of the mobile users. When I say direct tie-ins, they still have an outlet, but it's just simply a meter on a pedestal, it's not associated with a building. And we felt that was going beyond the definition of what a temporary use is. When I'm making that specific improvement to the site to serve that specific temporary use, that's when we start going into the idea of is this semi-permanent or permanent? So what I've done here is I've just outlined in black and in red, and we can go through these later in the discussion, I've just simply showing a couple of changes that we're suggesting in light of the letter received by the chamber and what we're doing with the electrical side of things. So the most important part of this, you'll notice that we struck out some language, or I'm suggesting we strike out some language that is in section seventeen oh five oh five oh, section P one H, referring to the connection to the public and private electrical service and other utilities. And then what I'm suggesting is that we add a new subsection K that just says, shall not be attached to any public or private utility except that, okay? And that's really important here. Except that electrical power via an active existing utility account serving an established operating principal structure or use on the same property may be provided by the utility account slash property owner in a code compliant manner. Some of this wording, the reason I have it this way is, when we do fireworks stands, for instance, we allow them to operate on generators, but they'll run an electrical cord from their generator to wherever their electrical is. The code compliant aspect of that is that the cord has to meet certain standards for the load that's going on that cord. It also has to be covered to prevent tripping. So the reason I'm pulling out that code compliant aspect here is that if that electrical cord is being run from a building adjacent to a property, it has to be checked and inspected by the building codes folks to make sure that it's adequate for the loads that it's running and that it's also a non-tripping hazard. That's code compliant with building codes. So that's an important aspect to point out. And that's, again, this is allowable as part of an approved special event, community activity or intermittent accessory activity. So again, if this is a mobile type use, a truly mobile use, we will allow that plug-in to occur under the code compliant conditions under those situations, okay? If the unit is becoming more semi-permanent or permanent, we would then get away from the temporary use permit, and this would be something that could be addressed through the conditional use permit, which may mean that you could establish an individual meter on the property if it's becoming permanent or semi-permanent at that point in time. The other thing that we have clarified, and this is language that's currently in our code, is that however power cables, similar devices shall not run across any city street alley or pedestrian facility. So we don't want the liability of having these things going across a sidewalk, for instance, in front of a business that's along Main Street, okay? So when we start thinking about it, or we don't want it to go across a roadway where we have vehicles driving over it. So that's an important part, and that's why that clause is at the end of that. So that had to do with the individual mobile uses, and then the other item that we're suggesting is very similar language, but this would go under the mobile home grouping side. So there's a set of standards that we have listed in subsection P two, and I'm suggesting a letter E be added. And again, electric power via an active existing utility account serving an established operating principal structure and use on the same property may be provided by the utility account property owner in a code compliant manner. Again, very same language, it's just going into a section that's under the mobile home, or mobile home, the mobile food groupings definition. The other one had to do with the mobile food use itself, just an independent vendor. So those are two things that if we want to come back to this language, we can bring it back up to the screen later and discuss. The staff recommendation at this point is to conduct the public hearing, discuss, then discuss the proposed amendments, make a recommendation to the governing body regarding those proposed amendments, and then you see up here some motion options. We can take the screen down for here during the public hearing, but I wanted to at least show you the summary of that. So with that, I believe my presentation is done.
Great. Thanks, Dave. All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak as individuals will be allotted three minutes, those represented in a group will be allotted five minutes. Please come forward, state your name and address for the public record and be heard.
Ma'am chair, I'm going to go ahead and go first just to read the letter into record and-
I was, yeah, I didn't-
We'll get that, that's okay.
Do you really think it's a reading that, do you want me to read that for the record?
I can do it, I'll get it for you, and we'll go from there. So mainly because the email came to me. If it would've come to the planning commission-
And that's fine, I was going to make that statement that we did receive additional material after the staff report came out, so I was going to make that. We've never read anything-
Right.
-into the record ever before.
Yeah.
So that was-
I'm going to do this for the people that are here-
Okay.
-because they do not have this information in front of them, so I wanted to make sure that it's read for the folks before they get up and speak because they may have similar comments or they may oppose the comments. So I just want to make sure we're all equal.
Okay, that's fair, Dave. Sure, go for it.
So this is an email that I received from Jason Lee, who is the president and CEO of the Gardner Chamber of Commerce. It came to me on Wednesday, November twenty-third. The reason you're receiving this tonight, just so that you're aware, we're following the city council practice that when we receive public comments that are written that come in after your packets have gone out to you, okay? So once we've delivered the packet of information to all of you, anything that is received between that time and the meeting is provided at the meeting to the folks that are considering the situation. So I'm following that city council or governing body practice, just so you're aware. So this was received on Wednesday, November twenty-third. It says, "Hi, Dave, I would like to address one section of the proposed changes to the land development code regarding food and beverage, mobile and mobile grouping that is to be considered on Monday, November twenty-eighth by the planning commission. Creating a distinction between permanently semi-permanent and mobile food production food trucks does help create a more safe and pleasant visual appearance in the community while allowing small and startup businesses to establish themselves and grow. And I support the general goals of the code changes. I understand that creating the rules for the distinction between a mobile and non-mobile use are challenging and can be difficult to define. In the current regulations under section seventeen point oh five point oh three oh, service and employment, permanently attached to the ground is both logical and relatively clear. The proposed regulations add to that definition the restriction to not be attached to any public or private electrical service, public or private gas service, or public or private water source. The last two items, gas and water, are consistent with the goals of the regulations and are typically self-contained within a food truck. My concern is with the connection to electrical service. Again, most food trucks have built-in generators or as an attached accessory. However, generators also create both air and noise pollution that can contribute to a poor experience for the patrons of the food truck as well as neighboring businesses and/or residents. Businesses that host food trucks regularly will frequently provide for an external power connection to allow the trucks to use utility power rather than a generator to reduce the negative effects of a generator. I would ask that some provision or allowance be made for a connection to public or private electrical service, either by removing or altering that specific provision or through another means that provides an opportunity for the connection without regulating every such use under food and beverage general. Please correct me if I have misunderstood the application of the new text amendments, otherwise I would appreciate sharing my comments with the planning commission as I'm unable to attend on the new date for this item to be considered. Thank you. Jason Lee, president and CEO of Gardner Chamber of Commerce." So the two slides I showed you with the red changes on those, after reading through this, looking at the old code net, that's where my suggestions are coming from for that. We can come back to those after the public hearing, but I just wanted to let you know that was the impetus for those two additional changes that I saw. So with that, I'll turn that over to-
Perfect. Thank you, Dave. So with that, any member of the public that would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record.
Hello, my name is Sam Boyadjin at four four zero Skylark Circle. Actually, my questions and concerns have been answered mostly tonight. My concern was, and it was addressed by Jason Lee at the chamber, was how did we arrive at calling this a situation a permanent or semi-permanent just because it's hooked up to electrical? And I think Jason from the chamber addressed that. And also then, what do we do about, say, a hybrid-type situation where maybe there's a food truck that is there consistently on a permanent or semi-permanent basis, but then others that come in and out? Is it the property itself that is considered a permanent food truck? Or is it the individual food truck that is considered permanent or semi-permanent? So some clarity there would help. My feeling is just because you're hooked up to a private metered electrical system shouldn't definitely classify it as semi-permanent or permanent. A situation where you would have multiple trucks coming in, let's say you had five or six trucks in one spot, I don't think anybody that would either patronize that spot or that even was around that area would want to hear six or seven generators going on. Give it a carnival-type atmosphere. I don't know that that really is something we'd like to, anybody would like to see. So my, I guess my question is, why is it just because you're hooked up to private waters or electrical, why it would be considered permanent or semi-permanent? Because you could come in and out, just like any food truck, and just because you're hooked up to that, I don't think necessarily you should have to classify you as a permanent or semi-permanent. I think that was my only question for some clarity and concern. Yeah, just basically is, how are we defining this if there are multiple food trucks as opposed to one? Is it the property itself? Is it the individual? The individual truck that's considered permanent or semi-permanent or temporary, however we classify it? So I'd like a little clarity on that. And then, like I said, I don't know that I totally agree that just because you have access to public or private, in this case, private electrical and water, that it shouldn't necessarily be considered permanent. So I think that was all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That down in notes, and we'll get to that during the discussion. Thank you for your comment. Any others wishing to speak this evening? Seeing no others coming forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by McNair with a second by Hamm. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The public hearing is now closed. Okay, commission discussion. Staff, I don't know if you want to take a quick stab at a little bit more clarification on our question from the public and then we can do a commission discussion, but if you could-
I'll try to do it. I imagine there'll be a few more questions-
Sure.
...as we go around, so I'll try to keep it relatively short on this. In regard to multiple food trucks, the way this is written, that would be considered a mobile food and beverage grouping, okay? So it's now away from the individual. So we have a site that wants to have more than one of these units on that site and operating at the same time, okay? That now makes it a grouping, okay? Because we have multiple trucks, we're now into the grouping sense. The first thing staff is going to look at when that grouping is proposed is, is this a special event or an activity, okay, a community activity where it's only for a temporary situation? So let's say it's over a weekend, okay, having to do with some community activity. Or let's say it's for tonight's, the mayor's Christmas tree lighting. A group of five food trucks were invited to come to this, but it's really only for tonight. At that point, if it's a special activity or special event, we would look at this as a temporary use permit, okay? So it would go through an administrative review process, just like it would today. It would go through that administrative review process, we'd make sure that all things are in order in regard to the paperwork for the food trucks that are proposed to be there, everything is set up and normal to go. If they're tying into some things as part of that special event activity, that would be allowed, but they would have to tie into the electrical, for instance, in a code compliant manner, okay? Again, because this is a temporary activity, that's what kind of makes it that way. If we have a property owner, and I'm going to use Sam's example because he is one of the, one of the individuals that prompted this as we were looking at the possibility for mobile food grouping, so as I talk about it, it's going to be familiar to him. But when we were approached with the idea of having six or seven, five, six, seven multiple units on one property, that's what started triggering for us. We didn't have real clarity in the code to begin with as to how to address those things. So what we've done is differentiated that to say, once we start establishing that this property is going to be used for grouping of food trucks, that is a permanent use of the property, just like if it was a restaurant use of the property. At that point, what happens from our standpoint is, we are going to say, instead of a temporary use permit, you're going to do a conditional use permit, okay? And that goes with the property, okay? So the property owner, they could, they could have a representative, like the food truck vendor group that wants to come in, could do, just like you get on normal development, many times you have the engineer or you have the development team who's representing the owner of the property. But what we would do is have an affidavit from the property owner that says, these folks are representing me and I indeed give their approval to pursue this conditional use permit. So they would have to get the conditional use permit, it would be assigned to the property and the property owner to allow that use on the property. You and the governing body then have the opportunity to review the proposal for what that grouping is going to look like, how it sits on the site, the hours of operation, its context, for instance, if it's close to residential versus in a commercial district, you may want to look at hours of operation. Those kinds of things would all be discussed as part of that conditional use permit process and review process, okay? So that goes with the land and the property. If that property owner gets approval for the conditional use permit, and it has those conditions listed that the operational conditions are, which could mean it could have permanent electrical as part of the conditions, where a meter is set up for it and things like that, then the individual units that come into that situation could never exceed whatever that proposal was. So let's say it's determined through the conditional use process that six is the most that you could have operating there at any one time, there could never be more than six there, but every unit, they could shift them in and out, but every unit would have to get a temporary use permit that addresses, did you have the fire inspection done and approved? Did you get your health inspection done and approved? Are you approved to be on this site in that location to operate under those conditions, essentially? And I want to be real careful. Right now, that's what we do with all vendors, essentially, is we have a temporary use permit that only runs for the calendar, okay? So every year, these folks have to come in and renew those temporary use permits. So that, that would stay the same, anybody who comes in there. So if the vendors are swapping in and out, let's say one is here for six months and they decide, you know what, there's no business here, I'm moving out, the property owner recruits another one in, as long as they don't exceed that cap that was on the conditional use permit, the only thing they have to do is make sure that that new vendor is getting their temporary use permit to operate. That's, that's the key. So it's a little bit of both in that situation. So it kind of, it addresses the idea of the multiple food trucks. Multiple food trucks that are permanent, and when I say permanent, not associated with a special event or activity of a defined length of time. When that happens, that conditional use permit is granted to the property owner. They're allowed to use the property that way for whatever period of time the conditional use permit is executed for. That could be one year, three years, whatever is determined through that process. So that, I think I'm addressing the multiple food trucks. And I think even in the hybrid situation, again, let's say the individual is capped at five and they routinely have three vendors there, okay? Those folks have their temporary uses, they're on the site. A fourth one all of a sudden says, hey, I'd like to use one of your spaces. They just have to make sure they have their temporary use permit and are appropriately permitted to operate at that point in time, at that location. So I think even in that hybrid, it's kind of the same situation at that point. The key is the cap. Because each site, the site size is going to determine what's really feasible in regard to the number of these trucks that could group in one location. Does that help?
That does. That does. I'm sure it might spark some commissioner questions. So staff, if we're good discussion from you guys, we'll start down on my right. Commissioner Sosa, questions, comments?
Okay, so. So what determines if it's going to be a permit, I would say a permit, if a food truck is going to stay there? Would every day or if it's going to be in and out?
Right. That's part of it. Yeah. So let's just talk about the individual vendor, because I think that's what you're getting to. The way our permit system on the temporary use permit works right now is, I'm going to use the Chick-fil-A people. No, I'll use, what is it? Soul and Smoke and Soul. Let's use them, because they're local and everybody kind of knows them. So Smoke and Soul, every year comes in for their temporary use permit, okay? They are a truck, they're moving in and out, things like that. Their permit, the way that is supposed to be issued is for them as a vendor, okay, at a specific address. Okay, so it's tied to a singular address is the way we operate currently. Now, what's going on out there is, we know that they're off hours when we're not here. We know that they set up at different locations and things like that. If we receive complaints about that, we go back to that temporary use permit. At vendor, we go, you're not supposed to have been there during this time. You're not supposed to be operating under your permit this way. That's under current regulations, okay? So that's primarily complaint-driven, because many of these hours are after staff hours. We're not even around at times, so we don't always know where they're saying up. But the permit is specific to a location for a specific vendor at that point in time. This system's not any different, but what makes it more, which triggers the conditional use permit, triggers that permanent, semi-permanent, is if that unit is going to stay on the property 24/7 outside of the hours of operation. Now we believe we need to go to the conditional use permit process. So when we have that kind of trigger, so that's one trigger, is the is the the unit is not truly mobile, moving around. It's sitting in one place. Now we're talking about the conditional use permit process versus the temporary use process. The other definition is that connection to utilities, which I think we've addressed the electrical one through the definitions. But when you start tying to sewer lines and water services and things like that, there's accounts and other things that go on in regard to tapping that water line into tapping into the sewer line. There's various permits that have to be met and they have to hit certain standards for how they go about that process. So we use that as a second trigger for permanency. Once you start getting hooked up that way, now we're into that permanent side of things. The other aspect of that is, and I'm going to use Moose's as an example, because that's a popular place here. It's just off a main street. It's been here for quite a while. Moose's has its trailer there. They do move it periodically because they service other events in other places. But they do store their item there. So what Moose's would have to go through this year is the conditional use permit process, not the temporary use permit process, if they want to continue to operate the way they've been operating. Does that help to define that?
Okay, so my question is, I'm trying to picture this, like trying to get this graphic organizer set in my head. So the conditional use permit by the host property. And then each vendor is set for a certain amount, we've got the cap, and they can move people in and out. Now, what is it possible for some of those trucks to be conditional use under the host property's conditional use? If that mobile food truck is setting up there, how do you delineate that?
Yeah. If I don't, if I don't follow you completely, stop me and go there, because some of these get to be rabbit holes. So the reality of that of that situation, remember, the conditional use permit process is for the property. So whether it's one vendor on that property that wants to be there permanently or semi-permanently, that's the conditional use process. It goes to the property. The vendor could actually trade out on that, okay? So the property owner says, man, I want my property to be able to be used this way. So I'm going to come through, I'm going to get my conditional use permit. I'm going to do the site plan so you can see how it's going to be laid out. I'm going to show you where there are going to be improvements or, you know, where things are going to happen on this. But at that point in time, they may not know who the specific vendor is. That's okay, because we're going to define, is it one vendor, two vendor, what have we got here? And if it's a situation that that person comes in and they're successful and they're there for the whole year and they have to, well, they get their temporary use permit, that truck does. They get that for their calendar year and they're successful, they want to keep going. They simply renew that temporary use permit year after year after year.
Oh, okay.
Okay? The conditional use permit could have a length of time that's much greater than one year. But that would be determined in the process that you all consider. Just like we do with other conditional use permits, we usually have a timeframe that says, yeah, we don't think we have to see you back here for this many years. Or we may even say it's a permanent use, we got no problems with it being permanent. So differentiate that a little bit. Where we're probably going to be most sensitive is if you're adjacent to a residential area. So you're operating a food truck on a somewhat permanent basis under a CUP in a, near a residential or adjacent to residential areas. We're going to probably be recommending a shorter timeframe for consideration of renewal of that CUP because of the sensitivity to the neighbors and the residents. Whereas if it's embedded in an industrial or a commercial area and completely surrounded by those things and we're not worried about that kind of traffic generator as much, we might say, hey, this could be a permanent conditional use permit on that property. So again, the vendor can come in and out of there. The property owner gets that conditional use permit established as a allowable use under certain conditions on that property. We want the vendor to be successful, okay? But if the vendor is not successful, and they go, we're done after three months, we're done after one month, the replacement vendor that comes in has to get their temporary use permit for their vendor and move. Then they can move into it. So it's going to take some coordination with the property owners, because the property owners are going to say, I'm trying to recruit a new person in here. But the one thing that that property owner's got to tell them is, the vendor has to get that temporary use permit before they'll be allowed there.
So the conditional use is like the umbrella, and then the vendor is getting their responsibility?
And the conditional use is really only triggered by permanent and semi-permanent situations.
Okay, okay. I think that's what I was looking for, with the semi-permanent, what was allowable for the individual food trucks based on the conditional use of the host property?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, when I say that, this is where you got to differentiate between the individual vendors who are out there floating around, right? They have to get their temporary use permits for whatever address they're going to, okay, as a mobile item. But if they want to tie to that water sewer, et cetera, that's going to trigger that conditional use permit. Because at that point, we're considering it a permanent or semi-permanent situation.
And that would be the responsibility of the host property?
Correct.
Okay, now, can a mobile food truck have multiple temporary use?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe we're charging fifty dollars per temporary use permit for the administrative review. I believe it's fifty, if you recall.
I think that's all I got. That answered everything.
Couple of weeks ago, I was down in Springdale, Arkansas, and I drove past two different lots that were being utilized by food trucks. One seemed like the regulations were probably pretty lax. The other one seemed like it was very well in order, very well maintained. The setup was great, looked like it was neat and tidy. Is it common for cities or municipalities to ever be the sponsor for a site like that? Or is it typically that these regulations are going to be geared more towards private property owners that are then going to be in charge of making sure that all the codes and regulations are geared to?
The answer is yes and yes. There are communities and locations that it is a city activity. The city may actually own the property and they'll set up what's called a food court plaza or something like that. And the city actually runs it in the sense of allowing the permits or making sure all the licenses are issued accordingly, because they're the property owners. So I have seen that where communities have done it, and then I've seen others that are kind of the private side. And the level of improvements, if you will, in organization is really what kind of is striking us here, and this is why I like the conditional use permit side if we're going permanent, semi-permanent, is because that should reflect whatever the values of the community are at that point in time, right? The idea is, through the conditional use permit, is not to make it so arduous that nothing can be done. On the same hand, the property needs to be kept up to a certain standard. Certain things need to be organized a certain way. It's got to, it's got to look like it belongs within the fabric of the community or the context of the area. And also, and also, the property itself needs to be kept in a condition that is somewhat equivalent to what we would expect of any business owner here in the community that has a bricks and mortar situation.
I was just, I know you're probably not in a position to say, but it seems to me like, knowing that there's a lot of details that are involved with organizing a food truck at court, if that's something the community's interested in, it seems like it'd be, I don't know if easier is the right word, but more manageable for a city to run that versus?
I've seen it, I've seen it run like a farmer's market though, too. I've seen where Chamber of Commerce runs it and manages it, not say, I would tell you that, how do I want to put this? Depending on the value system of each community, I've seen very well-run, government-sponsored farmer's markets, food courts, things like that. But I will also say there are times that government shouldn't be running those things. And I think that's where there's a balance. And right now, the way we are as a community, this is not an activity that the city's interested in doing, but we aren't necessarily necessarily saying we don't want to have it happen here. So that's kind of why these regulations are coming in, is to allow the private side to sit there and say, if you see an opportunity to do this, that's great, but it's going to have to be under certain conditions.
Well, I appreciate the letter from our Chamber of Commerce president. That certainly answered some of the questions that I had as it related to primarily the electric. So it's been neat to see all the different food courts and food trucks that we have in the community right now. So certainly in favor of doing things to support that effort. I think we're drafting some good language here. I'll listen to my fellow chairman here, questions that they may have.
We'll keep on moving down the line, see if Commissioner McNear has anything.
Just wanted to make sure I was clear on a couple of things. The, for a food court owned as a privately owned permanent or semi-permanent operation, would it be up to the property owner to submit for the total number, I think the answer is yes, total number of trucks or units? Would it be up to the property owner to determine what utility services, if any, were offered? Such as water, gas, sewer, electric, you know, or any mix or all they love? And then, would the, would the trucks have to have, they each have to have a temporary use permit, is that correct?
Yes.
In that situation? They could be rotated in and out. And one of the questions I had with regard to electrical connection and/or other utility connections, here's the letter from the chamber kind of outline. And I just wanted to get some clarity and make sure I understood what was being defined as connected in a code compliant manner. And that means it has to be inspected by the city, correct?
Yes.
Would that be for each time the truck is connected? Or would that be like once a year?
It could be. It could be each time. So just like our fireworks stands, what we do is an initial inspection when they first set up. But then they are subject that we can come in and look at it at any time after that. So if we get a, we may get a complaint, but I will also say to you, as with fireworks stands, which we only have those few days where those activities are going on, I would say that the fire department, police department, codes, building codes, those folks are sensitive to those uses during that time because of the level of traffic. So it's not uncommon for them to periodically visit to see that things are staying compliant.
Well, I guess the question I had was, let's say a truck came into a court like this. We had a court established. A truck came in on Tuesdays and Thursdays every week. Would that mean you'd have to go through the inspection process every Tuesday and every Thursday? Or it'd go through the process once and then be spot checked from time to time?
It would probably be once and then time to time. I think, I think the-
That would be, that would seem like it would be a good use of time.
Yeah, I think in those situations, what we're going to rely on, what you're describing with the grouping of these things, is we're going to rely on the property owner being responsible for some things as those changes occur. I will say what'll happen when that new truck comes in and they come for their temporary permit.
They'll be inspected thoroughly.
They're going to get the inspection check just like anything else. And when they initially hook up, we're going to probably be double checking all of that.
Would it be reasonable then, that, you know, after that initial inspection to hold the, would it be an unreasonable situation to hold the food court operator?
It's possible.
Responsible for those connections?
It is very, yes, it's possible. So let me, let me go back to the conditional use permit process. Because that conditional use permit, what we're going to be asking for, which is not unusual, is a site plan for how the site's going to be organized, laid out, what it looks like. That'll be a requirement, as well as what we do with many of our conditional use permits, which is we usually ask them to give us an outline of the business plan. How is this thing, how do you anticipate this thing operating throughout the time? So usually that's a one, two-page kind of summary that outlines hours of operations. We're going to be doing this kind of thing, so on and so forth. When that property owner receives that, yes, there's a responsibility that goes along with that as any property owner that has a business on their property. When we do code enforcement, for instance, various code violations, sometimes primarily with property maintenance, let's say, weeds and everything else, it's the property owner who gets notified. It's the property owner that has the responsibility at that point to ensure that the structure, the elements that are under their responsibility, they're following through and doing their part. If they receive that letter, right, a violation letter, and it's truly a vendor thing, then it's the property owner's responsibility to act to that vendor and get it corrected. If we don't see it corrected, the city still has that legal obligation to follow the property.
I can see your point there, because it's probably a lot more logical and powerful for the operator, the food court operator to hold a vendor accountable. Say, look, if you don't comply, we're going to have to ask you to leave.
Right. And a court operator is going to want, to be successful, they're going to want a good environment for people to come.
Well, they're going to have to charge probably daily rent, so much surcharge.
However they, yeah.
They're going to have to have a business, but they're going to have to operate it as a business and make a profit. That's bottom line, correct?
Yep. That's all I had.
Okay, great. Commissioner Gineman?
I just had a question regarding the, kind of the semi-permanent, the food trucks that's the subjects of that. What would be maybe some examples of what would be requiring them to meet? Because it says, like, meeting applicable building and zoning regulations as well as making sign improvements, that would apply to a permanent food and beverage. that would apply to a permanent food and beverage use. Are we talking about pavement?
Potential.
Are we talking about car, concrete parking blocks? I mean, how are we going to, I mean, because we don't, I don't want to, you know, put too much, you know, go too far and have unintended consequences for something that, you know, you know, for like a lot of the food, like a lot of the fast food restaurants they're going to.
Correct.
There are a lot of requirements for parking that they have to meet for, you know, drive lane widths, entrances, access management. You know, are we going too far with putting, you know, making it meet those, that bar?
Well, some of those things are going to have to meet no matter what. Because we're going to have fire code requirements that are going to say you have to have, the vehicles have to be separated from these units a certain distance. There are going to be certain things that whether we like it or not, it's the same standard that we require, and especially when it's a life safety standard, okay? So understand that, that life safety, those sets of life safety standards are going to always have to apply, okay? So we want to be very careful with that. And some of that does go to things like access management, circulation. We're going to want to know, where do they anticipate the customers gathering? Are they allowing adequate space for pedestrians to move around without cars running them over to get to a place? You know, we're going to want to look at that circulation, we're going to want to look at those things. Again, that's what I like about the conditional use permit process, is the fact that it's not just relying on a staff, you know, administrative review to some technical standard. It allows the process to come to you all in the governing body and say, oh, does this seem like a reasonable standard or not in this context? So you get some flexibility in that context. I will say life safety standards are non-negotiable, okay? There's just certain things that we will all look at you and go, I'm not sure you want to go there with that. But on things like improvements, yes, there are some standards that we will say. For instance, if the whole property is nothing but gravel, we require pavement for parking areas on any use in this community, does not matter. So yes, you should have a paved surface if you're going to park vehicles on it. You're going to have to meet some of those types of standards. So there may be situations like that where that occurs. There may be situations where the access has to be adjusted. But again, I think this is to be context sensitive, and that's why the conditional use permit, again, is that idea of let's look at that site and the values that it has and what's going on in its context. And what are we willing to accept or not accept in that situation? So I'll, I'll say for instance, the, the property to the west out here that has the sushi place out here, it's surrounded by residential houses. Okay? I'm going to say that there may be some more things that are stipulated there because of concerns of how that impacts the residential uses that are sitting there in that neighborhood right next to the operation. Again, versus something that might place itself over by Price Chopper, okay? Over with QuickTrip and those elements. Maybe a very different scenario there. So I, that's what I like about the conditional use permit process, is it gives us flexibility to look at the specific context of each of the parcels as they come up through that process. There may be, there may be requirements, for instance, seating areas. How are the seating areas arranged in light of where you're parking vehicles? Is there enough moving, movement room on the site that a vehicle could back in and out of a parking area and get to an access point without it driving within two feet of a picnic table that has children in it?
Yeah, yeah, no, that, that's, I, I, that, that makes total sense. Because yeah, it can be a little, it's, it just takes, there's no structure to it. It just takes one person to park the wrong way, the wrong spot, in the wrong angle, and then the next people will look confused, so.
No, and I think.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and I think we're going to be very flexible about the amount of parking spaces. We've already had an internal conversation. Because typically, we have so many parking spaces per thousand square feet on a permanent use. We're going to have to look at these sites a little bit different because you may have five trucks that don't even come up to 500 square feet. So now what are we doing? We're going to have to look at that through the conditional use permit process to see if it's adequate. It's really going to come down to site size, it's really going to come down to site context, it's really going to come down to a lot of different factors as to what the carrying capacity may be of the property.
Good.
Yeah, I just, I just have some concerns, I guess, if we're going to require, I mean, if we're going to be requiring pavement for some of those locations, I mean, that's a very significant investment to make those improvements. And I, I know I've been to, to food truck areas that, you know, don't have pavement, that are, that are gravelly, you know? You know, some types of worms. But I, I agree, like gravel can be, you know, can be dusty, you know, and can have its own consequences, so that's all I had.
Commissioner Cooper?
I have a question, and Commissioner Juneman touched on this, but, and it could be because it's part of the, the whole conditional permit, use permit. But what about the flow of traffic and the number of people that can access a site in any given time? And maybe dating myself, but I'm thinking about like when Krispy Kreme decided to go public and have outlets everywhere, and there were mass traffic jams, and, you know, what if something like that? What are our regulations that surround that and can prevent or protect people and, and the businesses themselves in case something like that were to happen?
Correct, because, and I, I will say, when, I think we have the same sensitivities, whether you're one of these vendors or you're the city in the sense of, if it's too overcrowded and the site doesn't work, people won't come to it, right? At a certain point, if the circulation is that bad, they're going to, they're going to go somewhere else. So we want to accomplish the same thing, right? And we have the same problem when it comes to places like, I'll use Freddy's for instance, these popular places. Now Freddy's is this way, Culvers is this way, Chick-fil-A. You look at their drive-through lanes, you look at the circulation patterns, the problems they're having with carrying capacity. So we have to, in each case, this is why that conditional use permit process becomes critical, because we've got to look at, how attractive do we really think this is going to be, okay? And it's, that's a somewhat subjective call, you know, on the part of the applicant and part of us as a city, as to what do we think that carrying capacity of that site is. And that's why I'm, I'm fearful of a lot of definitions in the sense of sitting here and putting standards that say you have to have five spaces per each food truck, or you have to have these kinds of things. Because I think we have to watch that relative impact and what's going on. On the same hand, we do have standards that have to be met. The parking space has to be nine by eighteen, we know that. So when they lay out their site plan, we'll know roughly based on the typical size of a truck location or a vendor location, the typical parking lot size, and the aisle width that's needed to allow a car to back in and out of that, to get in and out of its two-way traffic. Let's say there's one access point, and I got two-way in, I need at least that 24-foot aisle to allow somebody to back in and out and have opposing vehicles to get past each other. So we know there's some space parameters that are functional items, that are definitional, or life safety. And those are going to set up some of the parameters as to what the site can actually carry. Then it's going to come down to, what are the numbers? If we're talking two food trucks on this site versus trying to cram six on this site, you might be able to get it on there. That site may be something that handles that. And to what improvement level do we need that to be at that point in time?
So a lot of what we're talking about is the pressure there, is it going to be a?
It's going to be a, it's going to be a site-by-site and a case-by-case sensitive scenario, I think. And, and I know that there's a lot of surety when you come out with all these objective criteria that just say here are the parameters. But in a case like this, like the food trucks and the mobile aspects of this, and the potential just temporary use of a place versus the more permanent side, I think there's just so many factors here that we've got to almost look at inside by side.
I've got one, one comment, and I know Commissioner McNear has one thing to say. Commissioner Cooper, were you done? Did you have any other?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, the only question, comment I had is, with the CUP process, it addresses it site-by-site. Wouldn't, I, I, I'm struggling a little bit with the call-out for having the allowance of connecting to public or private electricity. We're only calling that out, that's only one utility. So to me, to keep the code similar and have all utilities, you know, you cannot connect to them, you're going to go through the CUP to where that could be an option to connect to, let's say, electric and water. Would that be correct, Dave? Versus calling it straight out as, hey, no, we, we, we don't like generators, you can connect to public, private electricity. Wouldn't it be more appropriate perhaps for the CUP to look at and address each utility per site?
And, and it can, yes, it absolutely can.
Because I, I just, I, I have a hard time just pulling one utility out because then here's to say someone, you know, there might be another, hey, we need to have another amendment, you know, we need to change this. I just really like the CUP process, I've seen it work, it, it, it works.
So, so, I think I'm agreeing with you, but I'll, I'll try to clarify what I'm thinking and see if that's the case or not. Under the CUP process, quite frankly, whatever, whatever the code says about this, you will have the ability to put conditions, even on the electrical use, okay? So, so even at that point, all the utilities can be looked at under that CUP, okay? So you, you might want to say, let's say it is a CUP for, for vendors to go on now, let's go eight vendors. We may want to require a certain power requirement needs to go to that electrical site.
Absolutely.
And the way they can connect, or we may say this has got to be served by multiple meters. Or we may say, whatever, based on that power draw. That's a, that's a hard one for me to call because I'm not the electrical.
Right, we don't have the expertise.
But what we would do in the CUP process is it goes to the staff review groups, including our utilities department. They'll look at that, and they may have questions for the applicant that says, okay, what are we really talking about as typical draw powers here? What makes sense? And that may be a site-by-site kind of definition of those things. So even though we're kind of, for the purposes of clarifying and allowing certain things under temporary use permit, we pull that electrical out. And I will tell you, our code right now does allow for people from electrical to run that cord to the business that they're adjacent to so they can. So if Smoke and Soul is at Patriot Bank, they could technically, under code today, run that cord into Patriot's Bank and get their electrical that way under our current code. So we're not really changing from that code at all. I was more stringent in my initial draft regulation and pulling that away. But I think based on comments there from the Chamber of Commerce and things like that, I felt like, okay, we've got the electrical that way anyway, so let's put it under these parameters. But let's make sure, and this is what's really critical, we want to make sure we have an active account, okay? I don't want somebody drawing power from a vacated structure that's got their account closed and somehow they found a way to gerrymander into the system. I don't want any of that stuff going on. So when we start looking at this, that's why you see the code compliant, the idea of an active account, the idea that the use of the structure has to be operational, things like that. Because otherwise, we get into situations where people are creative.
Oh, absolutely.
So, so I think I'm on the same page, I think we're on the same page. The other reason electrical's being called out is a little bit to address what the Chamber said, but also looking at our code currently, and at least trying to set up the parameters that if you're going to run that temporary electrical, let's make sure it's done right. Let's just not do that. Where we got concerns with the electrical, quite frankly, is when you set up a pedestal on a vacant piece of property and it's out there and exposed, that's now establishing a more permanency as an improvement to that.
Right.
And so that's where, that's where we started getting very sensitive about the electrical meters on individual pedestals being placed out on properties.
And so it's happening today, it's happening today, so.
It has happened through the utilities department.
So that's why I just have concerns that our current code is not addressing that. And that's why I just have a little bit of concern with loosening the code here, the land development code, when the current code is not addressing what's happening.
So, so what's going to happen at the end of this year, right? All these temporary use permits kind of come due at the end of the year, they're all for the calendar year. People are going to come in to renew their temporary use permits, just like they would under the current code. We're going to look at each site and each context under the regulations that are adopted. And if we have a scenario where somebody is tying in currently, and it's determined that it's a semi-permanent or permanent, we're most likely, and I'm going to say most likely because it's really the governing body, it's not me that gets to make this determination. But most likely what's going to happen is we're going to extend the temporary use permit for a certain number of months, get the conditional use permit lined up for that property and get that in through the process. And then renew what I'll call renewal, actually issue a new temporary use permit if that's all approved. But we don't want to necessarily just see somebody at, on January 1st go, I got to close my doors now and wait for a two-month process to unfold. So, but we do need to, when they come in for the renewals, to determine, are you in that permanent, semi-permanent situation, or are you operating as a truly mobile use? And so that'll have to be looked at. But we're going to make, we've already talked about at staff level, we're going to make some accommodations for that extension of a permit as long as they're in that conditional use permit process.
As long as they're in the process, okay. Commissioner McNear, you have one more?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Parking, I think we beat that to death, so I'm pretty comfortable. But are these, Commissioner Juneman brought up a point that, what about ADA requirements, stuff like that? Are we going to be, are we going to have to be subject to those kind of requirements as well?
It may need to be, yes. The ADA is not flexible in those terms. So yeah, we're going to probably have to look at it to see what's going to have to be provided. And I've got a city attorney that's sitting there, I saw him nod his head behind here, I actually still have some peripheral vision, so.
As I was going through the discussion, a couple of things came to mind, and that is, especially with regard to parking, it happened to be paved sites, and that could be cost prohibitive for a small vendor, operator, or court operator. With places like a Price Chopper or a Walmart, or something, be able to designate a certain part of their parking lot.
Potentially.
To, to be able to do that on a seasonal basis or semi-permanent basis. Because that might make, for, for a business like that, that might make better use of, of existing parking capacity that may not be fully utilized at this point.
It is potential, yeah. I, I would say we would be able to look at that under the conditional use permit process. The other thing that I think we'd, we'd have to be careful of, and I know for Commissioner Juneman, it'll be near and dear to his heart, is drainage issues, quite frankly. Now, we're not, I'm not suggesting that detention facilities and stuff have to be created, but if we have a site drainage issue, where water's flowing onto a neighboring property or something because of the situation, that may need to be addressed by that property owner before the conditional use permit is, is issued.
Because wouldn't that fall down in the same thing that everything else has to come before the commission with? As far as a, a platter or plan review, we've got to address all these, all these same issues, that's correct.
That's correct. That's what this would do, would create that consistency.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Cooper?
What about infrastructure? What if the current infrastructure won't support what a property owner is asking for? Is that going to fall on?
Generally, the upgrades would be the responsibility of the property owner at that point. So just like we do with any other developer, development that comes into the city, if they're proposing something and the city facilities are, you know, the sewer line or water line serving that area is not able to have that capacity, they are required to upgrade that capacity and make that improvement. They would have to, and tapping into the infrastructure, they have to meet all the city standards for doing the correct taps and making sure that they're paying for those permits just like any other business or development would have to do.
Any other commissioner questions over here, am I right? If there's no additional discussion, I would recommend we entertain a motion. I know there's a question from the audience, however, our, our public hearing is closed. So there's no back and forth time, I typically don't entertain back and forth. If you'd like to make a quick comment for the record, I'll allow.
I just had, I just had.
Real quick. Why don't we move to reopen public comment, to make it superficial? I know it's two extra steps, but you guys are pretty addicted to the questions and subjects.
Madam Chairman, I propose a motion to open, reopen public hearing temporarily.
We have a motion by Commissioner McNear.
I'll second that.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Hanson that we reopen the public hearing. So those wishing to speak?
Got to take one.
Please, oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, I've, I've never done this one, to be quite honest. All those in favor, please make it by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motion carries seven to zero, the public hearing is now reopened. So those wishing to make a comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record and be heard.
Okay, my, my question's very quick.
That was, that was a new one for me, so forgive me, I've never reopened a public hearing.
My, my question's very quick.
Sure, fire away.
And the ability to get water onto the property, as it was explained to me, and maybe you know the answer to this, Dave, maybe you don't, I don't know. But if you don't, if you could find out for me, I'd appreciate it. The ability to get water and sewer onto the property requires a permanent structure. That's what was told to me. Now, on one hand, in the scenario we were talking about, you would be. Now, on one hand, in the scenario we were talking about, you would be calling this a permanent or semi-permanent situation. On the other hand, water and sewer would not be available because it's not, there's not a permanent structure. So do you see my question? You're classifying it as one situation, but then not, not allowing all the amenities that are required. You're treating it like a, it would be treated like a permanent structure, but it's, but you're not giving the amenities that are necessary. So it's like, you know, yes, you're this, but you can't have this.
Right. I think, I think what I need to do on that, I don't have the answer for that.
That's fine.
But it's a good question. Don't, don't get me wrong. It's a good question. Because what we are talking about is a permanent use of the property versus structure of the property. And I know that was something that was talked about with utilities in general, with water, sewer, when this was all being looked at before. And it was the idea that it needs to run to a structure per se. And I think part of that had to do with the security of those systems. So for instance, the idea of if I just have an open water spigot sitting out somewhere, you know, when there's no operator there, there's nobody on the property, it allows for somebody to get in there and mess around and do stuff. I think, let me go to utilities and ask that. I'll make sure we get through that a little bit because it's a really good question. And before this, we go to council, I want to have that answer and be able to, we need to make adjustments as long as the commission, if the commission so feels that way. What I can do is investigate a little bit more and adjust for that if that's the case. Because I do, I understand where you're coming from. I don't want to leave you in a limbo situation where you go, oh, it's not a structure, so you don't get this.
Right.
So I think.
It's classified as one way of it.
Yeah. Yeah, let me, let me, I, I will take a look into that and get back with you.
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
It's a good, it's a really good question.
Yeah, that's a great point. Appreciate you coming forward. Any others that wish to speak before we close the public hearing? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
The motion to close the public hearing made by McNear with a second by Juneman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The public hearing is now closed. With, with that latest question, comment, is this perhaps something we might want to have you do some research and come back, Dave, to the commission?
We, we can if that's the, if the commission feels most comfortable with that. There's, I think there's two ways to handle this, and I'm going to let Spencer probably talk to this a little bit. But I think there's two ways to handle it. One would be if you, if you desire to hold this and table it and have staff investigate it, come back to you with an answer or a potential solution before you take action. That's certainly one option. I believe the second option would be, and when I say this, if I'm off, slap me. Yeah, just, yeah, just make sure you hit me really good and hard. I think the other way to do this is within the motion, if you want to direct staff to look at that and have a solution for it before it goes to city council, you can make that party. That's correct. The planning commission wouldn't be reviewing it, but, but the direction, I'm assuming the direction would be to resolve the issue related to the permanency aspect of whether this has to be a structure or if the permanent use would be defined from a policy standpoint. And what we could do, I think, as part of the motion, if we did that, and this motion's getting long.
Yeah, it's getting a little tricky.
And I think that the other aspect is, is if we're all in agreeance, that's the goal that I'm trying to accomplish and we get that accomplished by city council, I don't think that's a big issue. But if there seems to be a bigger problem with that or something like that, if you wanted to, as part of that direction, say, bring it back to us, I think they do something like that, Spencer, I.
So if, if that's how you wanted to go, I would just suggest a motion to approve this pending review by staff of whatever existing issues still have to be addressed. If they can be addressed succinctly, easily at the city council, we proceed to the council. If not, we bring it back to here. So it kind of gives that, Dave and staff can decide, hey, we answered this easy. This is a one sentence ad and it doesn't affect much. It goes to city council. And he can explain to the city council, this is an extra sentence the planning commission did here. If it's a multi-step approach that we have to do, or it's going to affect multiple systems, then Dave can say, okay, we're not going to bring it to the council. We'll just bring it back and talk to you guys again. So.
Well, outside of process.
It was a little longer, but the motion can be fairly quick if you want to do this.
Okay. Okay. Looks like there's, I'm, I'm getting eyes from, from the two commissioners on my left. I haven't looked over at you guys to see if you have questions. Commissioner McNear? I know you. I do. I do. So Commissioner McNear and Juneman, you guys have some comments. Go ahead.
I, I just had a couple of questions based on the last public hearing. You know, connection to maybe some type of utilities from a host building or something like that. Let's say that's a bank or a grocery store or whatever it's connecting to. If, if a, just a situation, could it be that if a, if a permanent structure had water facilities available for food trucks, could they not shut that off inside the building so it's not available to be used by somebody else or break it off or, you know, whatever? Would that be a reasonable combination of that type of a concern? Or what do you think?
Yeah. There's different arrangements like that. I think what Sam was referring to, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think what he's referring to is if I have a standalone food court as a use of a property.
Okay.
Okay? And I want to provide that water and sewer to my trucks, right? That, that water spigot or whatever. Okay? Can he get that done without a structure on the property? Okay?
Without a permanent structure on the food court property, like a food court administration building or something like that.
Sam, I'm going to look at you. Is that?
Yeah, that's, that's my question because in my understanding that without a structure, they would not bring water and sewer.
I was confused on that as well.
Yeah, that, it's, it's under that kind of condition. Otherwise, you're right, there may be ways where the property owner says, I don't have a problem with you tapping into this and I'm going to pay water and sewer, but through your rent or your lease, I'm going to charge you for that. So there's, there's ways, there's ways.
I was confused on which way I was. And I understand what you're, what you're saying is, without the use of a permanent structure per se, how do we, how do we get the conditional use to go through? That's a great question.
Because I don't want a situation where we approve the conditional use and then the utility policy is, I'm sorry, you can't have those services. That's what I want to make sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Juneman?
My questions were ready to schedule. So we talked about these two motions, whether we approve it, direct staff, and then they, then they go to council versus table it and coming back next month. And then the implementation of that, you know, you said a lot of the temporary permits come up on the calendar year. You know, our next meeting would be through December, then you have to take a complete seat on the council agenda. You know, by table this next meeting, delaying this code change.
Right. So. So if this was, if your recommendation was made tonight, whatever the recommendation is, okay? If that recommendation were made tonight, the schedule would be to go to city council and governing body on December 19th, which is their second meeting in December, which is our typical pattern. If we table it, we're hearing this at the end of January back here, planning commission would go to the city council governing body in February. So we'd delay it. Now, we have the ability with the current temporary use permits that are out there. We can, we can issue the permits for a temporary period of time. So without changing any of the operations as people come in here for the renewal process, we might say, okay, let's issue this for the next three months, right? Which is a little bit of an inconvenience to the, to the permit holder, but it would allow us to get through this process. They would be able to continue to operate during this process, things like that, if you choose to do it that way. I think we're, I think we're okay with that. Because typically, I believe our code says something to the effect that it can be issued up to one year for the calendar year. So anything less than that, we do have that flexibility to issue the temporary permits on a basis. Now, what I would look to you at, if we did it that way, what I don't want to do is necessarily, I think I would do it as an extension of their 2022 permit and not charge for that extension because it would technically not be the issuance of a new permit. We would just administratively extend it under the old permit and then I don't have to charge that fee two more times.
That's.
Yeah.
Okay. So am I, let me see if I'm like a great mind reader. Am I thinking that we're okay with the bulk of this? Because we know that we can tackle contextual concerns under a conditional use permit. We just want clarification on the permanent structure for those utilities.
Correct. The, the way that policy, the utility policy is, because it is possible, if that policy is what it is, either one, we're going to have to get a change of policy for the utility group. Sometimes it's just administrative, it's their own specs. Or we're going to have to rework some language here, rework to try to figure this out.
Right. But we're, we're talking about a language issue, not a, like, we're going to deny something. Right. So in my humble opinion, I'm okay with issuing a motion for staff pending their judgment and taking it to the government, governing body, since we know that ultimately it's just a language issue and not something that we need to thumbs up or thumbs down. Because we can adjut, we can address all of that under a conditional use permit anyway because it's just a language issue.
So you're saying it's just a matter of managing.
Yes.
And not a matter of policy.
Right.
You're changing, I mean, you're changing policy. That's where I have a hard time with just being semantics. Because you are changing the policy. You are writing something. We already saw the, the update to electrical, so they're going to work on an update to sewer and water. So technically, that's a policy change. That's not just some wording, a shuffling around. That's just, again, we're all having the conversation.
Right.
So I'm, I mean.
Well, I, I, what I'm saying is.
Which is good conversation.
That, that water, that water and sewer is going to fall under the same guidelines as the electrical.
Right. So Commissioner Ham, what you're saying is, you know, we agree, we're kind of all together in principles and we leave some of the finer details to staff.
I don't think it's more of a finer detail, so.
Well, at some point, it could come up every month with a minor detail and another minor detail. And if we don't have a quorum of this and that, you know, we could be finding ourselves trying to work on this thing in July next year.
Well, that's the whole purpose of the planning commission because we are the owners of the LDC. We are the owners of it. We are the gatekeepers of it. So that's why I feel it would be who of us, as planning commissioners, owners of the LDC, to review and have the discussion. But this is, I mean, general consensus, if, if, you know, I'm, I'm only one. We seem to have some general consensus for a motion, so we can definitely.
I agree with Commissioner Ham as well, that staff could pample that piece if they feel it's simple. They could hand over to the.
I'm going to.
And we're talking about, if it's like a major.
We're, we're talking about the spirit versus the letter of the law.
Right. Yes.
I mean, the spirit of the recommendation versus the, the letter, you know, to the syllable.
Yeah. Let me, let me interject for something. The city attorney and I were just discussing this. And this may be an option that helps everybody involved here. Okay? So what we may be able to do, because we're pushing our December meeting up to December 20th versus the 27th or whatever it was, moving it up a week for December. That's really only about a few weeks away. It's not that far. You could go ahead and table this to the December meeting. It would go in January. Okay? So if we did that, I mean, I think we can make that accommodation. And that way, hopefully by your next meeting, I would have this resolved. I don't think we have to re-advertise a public hearing or anything like that for this item, which you think we should. That's, that's the kicker. Right now, that's the kicker.
Is that, is that a legal face? Is that legally, is that legal face?
Because we've conducted the public hearings.
We have conducted, closed it, and we reopen it for this new issue. Now, if you're just doing a text report to address our new issue, I think we need to do a public hearing.
Yeah. And I think that would be the purpose. The purpose would be to address the issue that's come up. And essentially after that, it's more of the discussion. You know, you would, you would be able to continue your discussion, obviously, and then make your vote and everything else in December that way. But I, but I'm, like Spencer, we wouldn't want to be raising 25 new issues after that.
Right.
Because now we're getting to, you have to re-advertise and you have to do that. So I think that, I think if, if our legal advisor is comfortable with the idea that you can continue to December, with the idea that we're only going to be addressing this particular issue because it came up in the public hearing and it's now closed, and we come back through this process, I think if that's the case, that maybe you're out here, that we can do that. And me extending the permits for a couple of months or whatever is not an issue for us administratively. We can make that.
That's, that, and that, that was my concern. I'm like, I don't want to hold up the process over the, over just this one piece.
Right. And I think what we can do.
I mean, this is, I'm not the one making the motion. I can't.
I guess, just in clarification, Commissioner Ham, what you're saying is, I think we are on the same, you and I are on the same page. Where our concern isn't so much the addition of, or addressing of one, one or two small items. Is this thing potentially kicking up new items, new items, new items?
Right. And, and we're not.
And we're fighting ourselves in July next year. That's being ridiculous. It could happen.
Right. Yeah. And we, we've covered the bulk of this. We're just talking about language that I think falls under one specific part.
So another option is just to approve this as is and direct staff to bring whatever findings staff creates on this last issue up. And we just do one more limited public hearing. We can do it next month. We can do it in January. That way we can get these done. Dave doesn't have to worry about extending conditional use permits. You've got the bulk of this in place. And the worst case scenario is somebody who has this specific issue on an open property might have to wait one or two more months for a complete answer from you all. And that gets 99% of this on the books and moving, and we don't have to worry about my legal face on public comments. It protects you all. It gets the most of it done and it keeps the wheels moving.
And that's what I was looking, and that's what I was looking for. Yeah.
I mean, it's sort of the public to make sure that they're being timely about the bill.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't want to hold up potential permits, renewing applications, people waiting, being in limbo over one piece.
Because honestly, what I may find, and again, I know where Sam's coming from, we may find that the use of the term structure by utilities and others, they're comfortable with permanent use as well. It's a great question because I have not asked them the differentiation. In my mind, I know what the difference is between a permanent structure and a permanent use. So, so I've got that, but from a utility standpoint, many times, they say structure because that's their paying customer a lot of times.
Right.
So I, I just need to get that.
Right. It's just a clarification of the language.
No, under that situation, we're okay as long as the, the water stuff is, you know, somehow secured when it's not in use or whatever.
And that's what I was getting at. It's, it's really a clarification of two things mean two different things to the same people, but you're talking about the same thing.
Right. But what Spencer is getting to is if they come back to us and say, oh, no, we really mean structure, then I may need to be coming back to you with some additional amendments to this to address that.
Right.
So that's what, that's what the differentiation is.
Right. Okay.
You really totally chance to be able to be a part of it.
Yeah.
I'm just not going to comment. I mean, I, I'm.
I got a key volume to watch.
It's the utility provider that needs to be assured that this is going to be an adequate operational scenario for them. Because they are, they're tasked with securing the safe water supply and distribution. They're tasked with all that. So it's, it's really, utilities, are you comfortable in this?
Right. I'm, I'm good.
Good, good, good.
Yeah. Oh, goodness.
Yeah. It's on you now.
So before you make a motion, before you make a motion, if you're comfortable with the additional language that I kind of showed you on the electrical and everything like that, as part of your motion, if it's recommending approval or denial, whatever it's going to be, as you make that motion, make it as a recommendation for whatever action you desire them to take on the content and the proposed amendments plus what was presented by staff tonight, if you are so inclined. Just to make sure that that's clear in the motion.
So I make a motion, I'm making a motion of recommendation. Do I need to add that at the beginning or can I add that on after number three? Oh, no, wait. Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry. All right, planning, I make a motion to approve the proposal of, sorry? Sorry. Okay. The propos, the proposal of the text amendments to the mobile, uh, the mobile and mobile food and beverage grouping uses. Um, as, as presented by staff with the condition that staff. Adjust, uh, if staff need, uh, okay, hold on. Sorry. On the condition that staff speaks with utilities on clarification on permanent struc, appropriate utility structures to proceed to the governing body.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry to, so I think the cleanest way to do this is to just move to approve, deny, whatever, this in-whole as presented by staff tonight.
Okay.
And then as a body, after the motion's done, you can direct staff to check in on this additional issue.
Okay.
And come back and present proposed text amendments whenever he has to answer, which then also gives him more time to give utilities for the holidays.
Okay. All right.
Approve or deny this as presented tonight?
I, I make a motion to approve this motion as permit, as presented tonight by staff. As te, text amendments as presented.
Recommended to city.
And recommend to city council, to city council.
Second.
If the motion made by Commissioner Ham with us, I can find McNear any discussion on the motion. Good job. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Good job.
Thank you.
Sorry to make.
That was.
You're on the. You're on the floor.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Um.
Okay. So what I heard from staff from, from my perspective is, one, we're okay to move forward with the amendments to go to council on December nineteenth. Um, in the meantime, I will check with utilities to see about the policy and the question that came up. Um, if we get that resolved and there's no issue there, it'll keep moving forward the way it is. If we see an issue on the horizon, I'll be reporting that back to you on December twentieth or the meeting on the twentieth.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Good. That was a good, good discussion. Okay. All right. Regular agenda, item number two, planning commission officer elections. Do we have a, um, presentation from staff other than the obvious?
I've talked too much tonight.
I know, Dave.
I think for the new commissioners, just so they're aware, understand, we typically do elections in May. That's what the bylaws talk about. Um, we had three positions that were up for renewal during that period of time. It took some time to get those approved, um, through the process that went on. Um, they were all renewed. Everybody's back. So, um, we originally had this on the agenda a couple of months, well, no, a month ago. We didn't have our meeting. So essentially, we're kind of here now based on the delay of that renewal process. So just so everybody knows, we'll get back on schedule next May, okay? So we will have elections again in May because that's what we're scheduled to do. So this would actually be for the term of office. Um, Steve and Adriana have been serving in their capacities as an extension of their, you know, election in the previous year during this time. So essentially what will happen is we do the formal election to meet the bylaws aspect of this, then in May we'll come back again and do the same thing. So, um, there are two offices, the chair and the vice chair offices, uh, to which you need to elect. So, uh, from that perspective, the chair kind of conducts the proceedings of nominations and acceptance of nominations before you vote. We can do one office at a time, you know, do your, do the chair or the vice chair.
Okay. Uh, let's just start with the chair. Do we have any nominations for chair?
I nominate, you, Commissioner Mater for chair.
I'll second that.
So we have a nomination of myself, Chairman Mater, as, uh, continuing on for another six-month term. Do we have any other nominations for chair? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for Mater as chairman for the, uh, next six months until we have our election again. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor, seven to zero. All right. I will take nominations.
We are assuming for the record that you were accepting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll accept.
Okay.
I've never had to accept.
I just want to make sure.
We want to make sure we didn't force you into that.
I accept. All right. Okay. I agree. It's been a long day. All right. Nominations for vice chair. Anyone have a nomination for a vice chair?
I can hear, just to make sure, I'll second that nomination.
Great. We have a nomination made by Sosa with a second by Juneman, um, that we nominate, um, McNear for vice chair. Any other nominations? Okay, let's put it to a vote then. All those in favor for McNear as vice chair, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. McNear, do you accept the vice chair role before I announce?
I can accept it through May.
Okay. So he's accepting through May. Uh, motion carries seven to zero.
I'm, I'm prevented from running, or from being appointed for a third. I can, I can only have two consecutive terms.
I'm out after this one.
I'm out after this one too.
I'm looking at you because of a communication that you made with me previously. Do you want to say anything about your position?
I'm gonna let my position expire. So my last meeting will be in January.
Just so folks know that that's gone on, Commissioner Hanson had communicated with me. We've already informed the city clerk of that scenario. So, um, they're in that process of collecting resumes and applications for the position and that. So I didn't want anybody shocked by it. That's why, that's why I was looking at you that way.
Well, thanks for your service.
Yes, yeah. I appreciate it.
It's been an honor.
Yeah, it's been great working with you.
Well, not yet. Not that I know of.
Okay. Uh, regular agenda, item number three, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting schedule. Staff, do you have a presentation here?
Quick here too. I'll, I'll use the infamous words of our deputy city administrator. This is a housekeeping item. Our, um, our bylaws require that each year you adopt the planning commission's schedule, um, for meeting dates. And essentially, that's all you're doing at this point in time. The council meeting dates, they're just there so that you can see how these fall. Um, and the application deadline is really there so that you can see how this falls as a timeline. Um, before you is a resolution, PC twenty-two, one, that has the proposed planning commission meeting dates for twenty twenty-three and the first month of twenty twenty-four. We always include that one because the applications come in in twenty twenty-three. So I want you to be aware of that. Um, you will note that we have adjusted the December meeting again. It's been moved up a week. If anybody's wondering why we do it on a Tuesday, that's because that is the typical week for our city council meetings and they meet in here on the Monday. So we come in the night afterwards and do it on the Tuesday night. So, um, if, uh, you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those, but this is really a item that's required by the bylaws. If you do approve this, the resolution, um, the chairman will go ahead and sign that tonight. Put out the more detailed schedule, which, so you're aware, if you've ever wondered the process to go through, I think these are in the old package or not. In the front pocket, and you'll leave it in there, the front pocket is the much more detailed activity schedule that staff goes through. This is put on the city's website and this is what we send applicants to so that they have an understanding of what's required of them. From a timing standpoint, our application deadlines are generally the first Monday of every month, although for holidays, we've made some adjustments here and there. Um, we do require a pre-application meeting at least two weeks before so that we get all the applications. Um, and then we push for a discovery meeting somewhat earlier than that because of the cost that these people go to to put their plans together and that. The earlier they're in talking to us, even though it's not a requirement, we encourage them to get in before they're spending tens of thousands of dollars on something where there may be immediate red flags that we can identify right off the bat. So, um, that is, there is a resource to you all, um, any, with that, stand for any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff or I would entertain a motion on this item?
Second.
Motion to, uh, is, does somebody make it?
No.
No.
You're noting.
You're a darling.
Motion to accept the resolution as written, resolution number PC dash twenty-two dash one.
Commissioner Sosa, you still on the second?
Second.
Perfect. Perfect. We have a motion made by Commissioner Cooper with a second by Commissioner Sosa that we, uh, adopt a resolution, PC twenty-two dash oh, setting the planning commission meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three. There's no questions on the motion. We entertain a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?